My name is Rob Visser. I'm the 14th of July 2016.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your name and say that again, please?
I'm sorry, Rob Visser. Resident of Winter Garden. Just wanted to thank you for your time here tonight. It's really clear you have no obligation to jake your hand in this question. So we'd like to implore you, please. We're here because we care about the city, we care about the community. We implore you to make this progress. It's already dangerous in terms of forward congestion of traffic. And it's foreplanning transportation planning. It's just, it's become, it's become unlivable. It's dangerous. So we just want to implore you, please. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Commissioners. Andover, 14810, Tilden Road, Winter Garden, Horse Garden. You know, it's interesting to hear presentations of attorneys and your city staff. The thing that always gets me a little bit sideways is I want full information about making a decision to do something. So I'll give you what I know. The Tilden Place was going to be developed. We didn't know about Tilden Place until my husband and I were suddenly awoken at 7:30 in the morning with earth moving equipment knocking down our shared bamboo and our fence line housing our brood mares. We get up, we run next door, we're calling the city, we don't know what to do. They basically said, "Oh, yeah, the contractor, the developer, they were supposed to let you know they were going to do that, we're really sorry." So my husband and I are out in the middle of the day trying to move brood mares out of pasture, secure our animals before they run into Tilden Road. The poor other neighbor had a pique that they were made not to fence down. It was creating havoc. But to me, it wasn't that. It was the fact that how in the world did a development get approved next to our farm without us knowing about it? Well, that's the interesting part. We contacted the city that day and we asked them what was happening. We got a copy of the development plan and they invited us to come down and meet with them. Michael Hofer, Steve Pash. Well, we go down to meet with them and we find out that over 400 notices were mailed out to all Winter Garden and County residents around the project, but they forgot to mail us ours. Isn't that just bizarre? So we got an apology from the city manager at the time. But what was interesting about it is I raised the same to Mr. Arndman. And Mr. Arndman told me, "Ms. Binkler, notices are courtesy, it's not required." Basically saying that we noticed 400 other people, but we didn't notice you. It was an oversight, but it's not required. I'm not going to go into my legal analysis of that, but to me, it seems a little shaky. We put that on the side. Then next is our meeting with Mike Boehofer and Steve Pash. We go in and we try to do the same analysis that Mr. Spade did with the city, saying, "How in the world did you guys approve this development next to our property without exploring all of the necessary criteria and discussing it in any forum, stating all the adverse impacts?" None of it, none of it was discussed. With that, because I picked a nasty nerve with Mike Boehofer at the time, I guess no one ever challenged the city on these checkboard approvals that go through without any requests for any detail. He stands up, slams his fist on the table, tells me to F off, and if I don't like it, then sue the city, and leaves. Now, this is a meeting with a property owner that has a horse farm that's trying to figure out how they're going to operate with houses 20-some feet from our property, and the city manager tells me to F off? Unbelievable! But that's not even all. What's happened is every single time we try to deal with the city staff, we get this warm and fuzzy, and you know what? Nothing happens, and if anything, we get undermined. Every single time. It's the horse farm, the horse farm, the horse farm. We are nasty thorn in the city staff's side, and they know it. And I can go into a lot of very fuzzy details of what's happened since we started to challenge the city, but I'll tell you one thing that's really bizarre. The day after Mike Boehofer storms out of the room and tells me what to do and sue the city, we get the property appraiser from the Orange County come out to really inspect us to see if we're adding. Unbelievable! So we tour her around, we show her that we're adding, everything's great. We, she leaves. And then some other things that I won't get into in this meeting, but I'll be happy to answer privately, happen to us one after another. We have had to defend ourselves and our farm and hire attorneys, and one thing after the other. Now, you could say it's all coincidence, but I can say that I've been at that farm for over 20 years, and not one time have I ever had anyone come to inspect my property and invade my privacy like I have had since I started to challenge the city of Winter Garden. Now, on another note, the JUA, the letter. I'll tell you about that letter. First of all, as a single woman running a horse farm and trying to upkeep it for all these years, you run into a little bit of issues with infrastructure, and you run into a little bit of issues with keeping things together. So, of course, I am 70 acres in Winter Garden. You don't think developers are constantly knocking at my door, asking me if I'd like to make millions of dollars, which I know I'm bizarre for turning down, but maybe I should. But nonetheless, I turn them away. There's been a couple developments in my past that have kind of rung my ear, and they have been a developer back in 2013 that came to me that was interested in assembling a bunch of the parcels on Tilden Road. He said, they said, I don't even really remember their names, but they were smoking mirrors. "We're going to buy all these parcels up, and we're going to take your horse farm, and we're going to rebuild it for you. It's going to be the most Matt Daddy, commercial, beautiful building. You're going to love it." Well, there goes the letter, because of course, you can't, you can't bring in any of those, any of those parcels if you're not annexed into the city. So at the time, I was told by Mr. Pash that the letter really meant nothing. If I just wrote the letter, I always have the option, or not to, do whatever I want with my property. It would never affect my property, but it would give this developer a chance at least to explore it. Well, back in 2013, that was a bunch of, excuse me, BS, and I sniffed it out with that developer, and they went away. No big deal, 2013. Flash forward, 2020, when your city manager stands up here and he tells you that three of the parcels that want to annex into the, into the city, two of which are mine, consent and desire to annex into the city in 2020. Now, the funny analogy I gave my attorney and my husband about this. Let's say you see a child born in 2013, and you say to that poor mother, "You know, if you can't afford to take care of that child, I'll adopt it." And in 2020, she walks up to your door and knocks on your door, "Here's your kid." Honest to God, that's the only analogy I could come up with. It's so absurd. Without Mike Boehofer ever calling me, without an email, without any notification whatsoever, he stands in front of you guys and he tells you guys that we want to annex into the city. And further, he misstates, and, and I think it was Mr. Mueller asked a question to him. It was very important how many acres was being, were being dealt with in that, in that JUA, in that, in that Eighth Amendment. They said 10. 10? 10 acre? It wasn't 10 acres. It was more like 70. And what a misstatement. What a terrible thing. You guys rely on your staff to give you guys the facts, not to give you half-truths, not to tell you what you think you want to hear to pass something. I think it has to be explored with all of you. I didn't want to be annexed into the city at 2020. I was too busy getting ready to fight my world against a development next door to me. Do you really think I'd want to annex into the city at that point? I was too busy being told to F off by your city manager. Unbelievable! I love you guys. You guys have all been really, really nice to me. Every, every conversation, every email. When I sent the email back in October, the reception was wonderful. But I don't want to be part of the city. The biggest reason why is you guys don't recognize agricultural use, and that's why I would never, ever reconsider that notification amendment, the JPA, is because you don't recognize agriculture. You don't have a use, which I think is fascinating, that the, that the Winter Garden that's all it was known for was oranges and agriculture, and you guys don't even recognize smurfs. But I can't. I can't be, I can't be a part of the city. I can't. Because it's too close, it, no one recognizes our uses. I'm going to go into the last thing that bothers me the most is when you guys asked the applicant to reach out to us, and that Tara Teeter was not here tonight, so a stand-in was, was presenting. They never reached out to us. You know what they did? Tara, weeks later, sends this hap- sorry, a very quick email to Brent with a whole laundry list of things that she was going to try to talk to her client about to see if it would make the project better. You get the email, great, I go through it, I make up my comments. She never wrote back, she never said anything, she never said that they accepted it, they didn't. No. Right before the meeting, which by the way was, was delayed, she writes back and said, "Oh, none of these work. None of these work for my client." Now, in addition to that, I never heard from the applicant myself, except the night before, the day before the hearing, although it got postponed. This is, this is, it's confusing. It's not the applicant, it's the developer that's working for the applicant, because I'll explain that to you in a little bit. The developer working for the applicant reaches out to me and basically says, "Look, I know you're really upset about this project, but I'll be more than happy to make the property owners go away because they're a really big pain, and I don't really want to work with them. But if I make them go away, will you work with us and we'll make everything good with this project?" That was the only time I heard from them. Their last ditch effort. And then, by the way, he said, "Oh, but I'm getting married, so I'm not sure we're going to make the meeting." And then, low and behold, the meeting goes away after all of our preparation. So that's one thing. But I'm going to leave you with this, and I don't think a lot of people understand the workings of these developments. There is an applicant, they own the land. There's a developer. They're the people that knock on my door and say, "Hey, can we develop your property?" The developer has the money. The developer order, they, they, they have all these reports that you guys see, the traffic report study, they pay for all of that. The reason why they're doing that is they're getting that land entitled. They're getting it worth a lot of money. And then, once it's entitled, it's called the takedown. Once it's entitled, now I'm not saying this is happening with theirs, I'm just saying this is typical, because I used to be a developer. Once the takedown happens, then property owner's out, the developer steps in, now the property's entitled, property owner made a couple million, now the developer has it worth more because it's entitled, and then they flip it. They flip it to a builder. They turn around and flip it, which is what happened to MI, which is what happened with property to our, to our West. What happened with MI is same thing. Same applicant, or same, same developer, more even to applicants, in fact. That, that, that developer came to you guys, got that land entitled, he bought it from our neighbors for pennies on the dollar, because one was, had Alzheimer's and was older, and the other one needed to get out as well because of his health. They, he takes it down for pennies on the dollar, he turns around, he flips it to MI. Biggest thing with the city is when I had problems with all the plans, I had problems with their activity during construction and what they were doing and how they were handling themselves. You know what I would talk to MI? You know what they would say? "We're so sorry, we weren't the ones that got this entitled. We don't know what to do. We weren't the ones. You probably have to talk to the developer, or we're going to have to sue them." But you know what? It's out of our hands because we weren't the, we don't, we weren't privy to any of the conversations. So it's watch my hands and go away. And then, we're the ones, like we would be if this was passed, trying to deal with some developer, housing builders down the road who has no idea what we all talked about, because they come in third party, well after the fact, second, third quarter back. But the, the, the biggest thing is the quality, too. And I know that back when this proposal hit everyone's desk, and especially Kelly, everyone was interested in who was going to be building these houses, because the city wants really nice houses. So people put up flashy old pictures of houses. They don't know what the houses are going to look like that. In fact, if you pull the Tilden Place development packet that you guys all saw with those pretty clay barrel tiled roofs and the toll runner homes, those houses look nothing like that. Nothing. So again, it, it, it doesn't ever, there's no follow-through, there's no match. So now, let's say, let's say you guys approved this development, let's say for some reason goes through, that housing builder that comes in is not going to be Element Homes that builds the multimillion dollar homes on, on Lake Down in Winter Garden. They're gone. They're out. Although that's what the developer's email said to all of you, or at least said to Kelly back at the beginning, and I think, I think Mr. Basio, you might have been aware of it, because I saw an email going back and forth, I'm not sure. But it was very big that Element Homes or that type of home builder was going to build these homes. We have no idea. It's going to be a flip. So with all that said, when, when it comes to, oh, and then it gets even better, one last thing. Then after the person builds their homes and they get out of the project, now we're left dealing with homeowners association. So when kids want to play soccer and have soccer matches in that pretty little passive park that they want to do up on the road, and when we have kids with bouncy tents and anything else that they want to do in the passive green park that they want to build, there's, there is no recourse. We have no one. We have no one, just like we don't have anyone back with the new MI development. They built a dog park and a kitty park next to where we have our stallions and our babies. Are you kidding me? The kids throw the balls across the fence at our horses weakly, weakly. There's, there's dogs that jump up on the fence. In fact, we have a loose dog that jumped the fence. What do you say to that? There's just no regard at all to when these developments get approved or where things are placed. So I'm sorry for the rant. It's just you guys need to know what goes on behind the scenes. And behind the scenes, I think the city has a little bit of clinging up to do with how the staff treats the people, because I have not been treated well, and I've never gotten apology from Mr. Boehofer or the city for the way that I've been treated. And as far as the 2013 letter, I would have rescinded that, and I would have never, ever painted any mind in the future, in 2020, if, if I was approached by the city and said, "Hey, do you want to annex?" So that is taken completely out of context. And I'm sorry for the long rant. It's just, it's a thorn in my side, too, but sadly, it's one I have to live with. So thank you. Thank you very much.
I certainly didn't want to follow that, but I appreciate her comments. I'm Sarah Maitland, I live at 14265, Sunrise Boulevard. I had a note, so you can rescind it from that. I also am a member at West Orange Country Club, so I appreciate that. As a member of the club, I'll start with that. Playing number 12. Time after time, sitting on that green, you can hear people slamming on brakes to the pad, cars coming through, looking through the gate, there's going to be the fence area, there's a utility box that's been smashed multiple times. You can probably drive right now, and I think it's smashed now over. So that means that I'm glad I told my attorney mention the transportation safety plan, because I'm sure many of you are aware, the Department of Transportation has a Target Zero Initiative, which means getting to zero of serious or fatal fatalities. But I've also noted that there's a billboard in the city Winter Garden on 050, and talking about, "Hey, Winter Garden, slow down." So I was like, wow, that's really impressive, this is safety and transportation professional itself. And noted that in the transportation safety plan, this is a first stage, talking about adding more officers, slowly down speed. And this development is a, is a really big issue as far as I'm concerned with safety. The attorney brought up, it's still my thunder, about adding sidewalks, but there's no connectivity there. We talk about having crossings, it's a really big problem with people crossing their block if there's no official crosswalk. There's also, it's within that 90 degree, almost S for not yet, S for there's two there. So one thought might be, hey, we'll lower the speed, but if we did a speed test and the traffic study, I don't think that would solve any of the problems, because people are going over the speed limit every single, every single night. I drive from my house to the club multiple times during the week, on the weekends, and there's a lot of traffic. I was really surprised when Tilden Place was allowed just based on traffic and safety issues, people getting in and out of that development, I've had multiple times. Kids on bikes crossing the street while I'm driving. I'm a seven-year-old myself, always trying to look out for licenseless pedestrians. So just wanted to make that comment, just from a safety perspective, having nothing to do with the development and/or the compensation or the GPA agreement. My last point would be from a drainage perspective, those of us who do play golf there, number 13, number 14, if you look at Ariel, West Orange's development is small, the lack of a better term, so I do have concerns for drainage issues with about 15, 12, 15 blocks in front of that area.
Good evening. My name is Hans Kropanzen, I live in 1727 Old Broadway. I am the resident of Emerald Bridge, and I do work at West Orange Country Club, and back in 2011. As a president since 2011, I go to work at 4, got to be at work at 5:00 AM, so I take my bicycle to the club, and I live right there in Emerald Bridge. There's no more, you know, there's no more local resident than I. I mean, I live it, I see it every day. The traffic is unbearable, and it's only getting worse. I'd like to see what is going to be done about if, God forbid, this project goes through, which I hope it doesn't, what is going to be the contingency plan as far as, okay, maybe notice is ridiculous. The, the intersection between Tilden and Tiny, horrible. We've also had a fatal accident. A lady, I don't know what happened, she, I, that resident walked in front of her property. She fell right in. She probably. And then just, not even a year ago, I believe, another gentleman went in. And it's, you add 36 cars, 36? No, it's going to be a lot more than those 36 cars. That analysis that they made is BS, I'm sorry. But 36 is going to be more like 46, if not 56, because nowadays, people live, family, everyone, even the dogs get a car now. But there's going to be a lot more traffic, a lot of congestion, a lot more accidents, a lot more, a lot more people diving in. I mean, it's, it's, guys, you cannot let this happen. So I thank you very much for your time.
My name is Linda Lopez-Pley. I'm the Horizon West Wednesday at 9:36 for the Orange Country Garden. I was first made aware of the Tilden Farm, of the grassroots and others, of the local New York Facebook pages. However, I'm a Jersey girl, I, horses are beautiful, I respect them, but from a distance. However, on March 29th of this year, I took the opportunity of the graciousness of the people there, and coming home from Honor Harbor with my six-year-old son, I pulled up to the property and was allowed an entrance, just to let my child kind of decompress a little bit. And from an untrained eye, it was evident just by walking onto the property, not how precious and special the operations are, the silvers, and how it needs to be preserved as part of what makes, what, just a sliver of what makes Winter Garden as special and in high demand than it is. While I appreciate that both parties on both sides have done these amazing presentations, and developers have done some amendment to appropriate their initial plans, those three houses have no business being there, even if you had to purpose, none of this should be up against adjacent strip道路. I urge all of you, every citizen in the neighborhood, if you ever make any type of decision this evening, please go out to the farm yourselves. Walk the perimeter, walk down the center lane, you will know exactly what I learned in minutes of my 10-minute visit at the farm, of why these properties that are encroaching on Tilden Farms have increased the liability, not only to their livelihood, the horses themselves, and the lives of the people that walk with the horses and their pride. It's unfair, reverence, and trials, you know, the situation has put our Tilden Farm property and their owners. So again, I respect everybody's positions. Some of the legal stuff might be a little bit over my head, but as a novice here, all I can tell you is see it for yourselves before you ever take a vote. You will understand and won't set foot on the property. Thank you for your time.
This is Ann Paul. I previously worked for Ann Paul in a new job for a business. I was actually there when the property next to me first got built, for about any notice Monday. So you know, it's a little complicated.
Could you give your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Dominique Perez. I live over at 16 Broadway, Delph Road of Winter Garden. And I'm at 1724, therapist of Ford and Winter Garden. I also own Mr. Trump's Bakery, Delph Road. We opened our second production center two weeks ago, and we pay a lot of taxes. So I have to say, I'm a horse lover. But what has happened to Winter Garden? I'm asking you, you know, it's been a lot of, obviously, you know, built and lost, and now I drive, independence, and it's just chaos. There's a lot of housing, trees are gone. It's heartbreaking, you know? It, it would be devastating for Tilden, because your infrastructure is not there. You want to put a lot of housing. What about infrastructure? You started with infrastructure. You're trying to run this like a business, you're trying to make money, I understand. But we are souls, we have hearts. Winter Garden had a heart, and now it's overwhelmed with traffic. The police are hardwood marshwood, stopping everybody out there. Do you think we feel good about this? I used to drop ride my horse on hard marshwood, and now you can't even get there. I mean, it's crazy. There's roundabouts, which people don't even know are driving here up from here. Roundabouts are great in Europe. Here, people stop, there's accidents all the time. Tilden is a really cute, it used to be tiny road, now it's a big road. I mean, you have approved for that private school to be there, and I understand, but traffic is enormous. Forget about the housing. When the traffic in the school in there, it's crazy. And, you know, I, I have two ways to go to my business. I go down 545, or I go down to Tilden. And when I go down Tilden and I see the babies, you know, the baby horses, on the field, it just makes me happy. I know my husband, my two kids, and, you know, just to, to take that away from Winter Garden, which is what the basis of Winter Garden was to be, would be devastating, you know? I mean, we all help each other. I've helped a lot of people. Drinking bread on the table during COVID, I feel that everybody should help each other. And to take that, you know, because if this happened, obviously, Ann will sell Monday and go away. This is not what we want. We don't want ugly housing down that road, and that's what you have next to her, is ugly houses. And I don't know if anybody lives in there, but I think it's really ugly. And, and the business is getting so ugly, you drive out down, it's like Edward Scissorfield. Remember Edward Scissorfield? And he didn't know which house he was in, because they all looked alike. I mean, do we have souls? Do we have hearts? This is Winter Garden. This is one of the best cities, 10 best cities in the United States. I thought I saw that somewhere. But you guys have stuff. This is not a business. This is a city with people, hearts and...
And just to piggyback off of, I previously, as I stated, I was actually working for Ann and Paul at the time when that property was being built next to them. No notice, people showing up, having to look at the property, either trying to make sure water runs off, because they were just Ann's property. At that point, like not $100,000 around him was put in, which I did help Paul drag that middle cross, had him, helped him stand it up and everything. Having to watch our horses get scared and freaked out because kids were playing around yelling as they see the fall, being filmed around. It's terrifying. You don't want to have this 1200 pound horse get spooked in front of Winter Garden, which would get hurt. Having to forbid someone get strangled. I've seen Ann Paul, I have, sorry. One of our girls get spooked, and she came off her pony for her arm, because a lot of my, it was using... Because of loud noises, excuse me, I won't see any of the kids there get hurt. Any of these horses, these beautiful creatures. It's not fair, I'm not at all. This development should not go through. Our city used to be absolutely gorgeous, as they said, you had the pasture, they didn't know the worst part of their business. Completely gone, you could drive down Tilden Road, go traffic. Even trying to come around that curb, almost been hit by someone because they're going so fast, that traffic is insane. I work at Disney, and I'm up at 4:00 in the morning, get there by 5:00. And even then, the congestion in the morning, because people are riding, racing, it's absolutely insane. If you want, you guys may go ahead and dock that speed limit down, it doesn't do anything whatsoever. You put that table there, all that's going to do is cause more congestion and more accidents. And heaven forbid someone lose their life illegally into that pond again. This should not go through.
Anyone else who has something difficult that I'd like to say?
I do, glad you asked. My name is Julia Visser, I live at 147062 Moore Loop in the Emerald Bridge neighborhood. During the last time I spoke to you, I appreciated you hearing the heart and the comments of all the things that we're concerned about, we can all agree, we love the horse farm, we love the horses, we love seeing that part of our city, you know, there on Tilden Road. And as I was reviewing the city's strategic plan and the goals that you have laid out when you adopted the budget for the year, I noticed that this particular parcel goes against some of the goals that the city has put out. So one of the city's goals is preserving the natural environment. Developing this parcel, forcing animals and plant life, like you've already said several times. The animals and plants that are currently on that parcel, forcing them out of their natural environment is in stark contrast to this goal of preserving the natural environment. New develops on this parcel will only cause further damage to the natural environment along Tilden Road, not to mention the impacts and well-being of the animals that will exist in the property. Another one of the city's goals is to protect an attractive community. I'm sorry, provide an attractive community by preserving community charm, achieving a high quality of life, and sustaining a desirable community. The citizens in this part of town have a reduced quality of life for all the reasons that have already been mentioned, due to reckless development in the past. Our area of town cannot be considered a desirable community with the way that things are right now. So adding another development to that is going to go against what the city's goals are for this. The city also has a goal of protecting the sense of community by protecting the history and small-town character. I really appreciate that that was brought up. Winter Garden was founded on agriculture, anybody who steps into the historical society knows. This was a citrus town, this is what Winter Garden was, it was agriculture. And to strip all of that away is a real shame. Like, the kids that grow up here have no sense of history of what this community was. And when we just keep turning it over to developers, like every other basic city in the state of Florida, we're no better than any other random suburb in South Florida, except they have better roads than we do. So at least you can still get around. Like, we have history and charm in Winter Garden, and we are begging for you to maintain that along Tilden Road. Like, make the right decision, it's already been partially wrecked by Tilden Place. We can turn this around, we know there's not going to be 24 houses on that property. It's going to be more, like, we all know, but there's no way it's going to stay at 24. The last thing I'll bring up is the city's goal of improving and maintaining mobility, which is already been addressed with the traffic study. How can the city reach this goal of improving mobility when we are sometimes stuck in our neighborhood by the traffic that already goes all the way down around that horrible curb we spoke about? Adding those extra cars is not going to improve this at all. So I think that this great presentation from Miss Bingo's lawyer pretty much gave you the reason you need to say no to this legally, right? So we can all agree on that, we can all agree, you guys even said, thankfully, you just want this to go away. So we can make it go away, just vote no, and we don't have to do this anymore, which is what we all want. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ray Poster, I live on, I live at Alexander Ridge on Cathy Hunt Drive. I've got a few questions about your proposed ordinance. Why PUD? Why do you say that it is to be PUD, PUD, C-PUD? Which allows for multiple dwellings, multiple housing? Should your 24 houses fall through?
I know, but I'm so PUD.
Who do we protect?
I understand, I think it was a group should be able to come in with PUD as a case.
I'm sorry, I can't.
Kelly, I think that is the lowest, and that's what you come in with, that's all you can do.
And using C-PUD control.
Yeah.
The, the PUD is to set those regulations so they would not be permitted to go out.
This is what you guys want to approve. Okay, you're saying PUD, okay, you're saying C-PUD. If you go out and you look at the definition of C-PUD, it's single housing, or double housing, or multiple housing, this way.
So that, that ordinance, there's, there's language, this isn't, this is just a general greeting? There's a code, but it specifies all those.
And title, meaning it's kind of ambiguous.
Well, it, it refers back to that.
Right. And just a little comment about the traffic. With the traffic accident on Avalon and Gavin Hill, early this week. This was, it shut down Tilden. There is no e rest around anything. And you want, if you want more housing there, and you've got another development, you've got Avalon Ours. E-Partage would also, no road construction, no plants, no construction. I know that section of Avalon is coming. The, the taxes, it's a terrible thing. So, something's going on.
Can I speak before you guys stop, please? Is there any way I can speak before you guys stop?
Yeah, go ahead, you'll be the last one.
That's fine. Okay, I hope I'm talking loud enough so they're ready to go, but I live at 5:00.
You'll come up to tell your, please, your name and address.
So, my name is Jamila Burns, and I grew up in Sumter County. They're experiencing a lot of what you guys are experiencing here. I have a business on Diller Street. I had to come up here and go through a special exceptions permit to even be able to start my business. I'm abided by all of those laws, even though it was lifted not too long ago. We still go by appointment only. Not only do I have a business here, I grew up in Sumter County, I own six pigs, okay, they're, those are horses. All right? We have the villages trying to move in, or, you know, develop land, okay? I was at, not to go off subject, but I was at Betty James, and I saw oranges hanging up as a Christmas tree. Those are the only oranges that I see around here anymore. Excuse me, I have really bad allergies. I'm saying that to say this, nobody's speaking about the chemicals. My friend was one of the people that won the roundup case. We know how dangerous that was. He won because of all the people that died and that were, heard from that. You asked the builders his side of the story, okay? What's going to happen if you guys don't approve this? Okay? If you guys do approve it, I'm willing to tell you as an influencer and as someone that grew up countryside, I frequently visit the World of Quest Reeds Center, I know how important it is for horses and farm life to be separate. I have a classmate that owns Zachary Farms, they do all grass fed, they can't have chemicals around. This is the food that you guys eat, this is the food that your children eat. Okay? I'm a cancer survivor, and I got it at 28. Five more of my classmates got it because they put in water treatment plant in our community. That's pretty much like agricultural, that's how I grew up. What happens when you build so much because there's already so much crime coming here now? I had a client screaming in my chair because her son could have gone out with a little kid that, I think somewhere at 5:35, he got a brain, a car hit him. Paul is my client, he's never happy when he comes in, all he can talk about is this. At what point does the greed stop? Okay? Some of us grew up small town, we know that counties have to grow, we know that people have to create and make businesses and stuff like that. Some of you guys have been in the city for a long time, I've done market research, your grandkids have grown up here, your children have, have grown up here. But again, I'll go back to the question. They're telling you they're going to develop in a certain way, they cannot tell you how many cars are going to pass you. They don't have an accurate number, okay? I left Clermont to move all the way to Dr. Phillips to get away from the traffic because I couldn't get home from Winter Garden. And so, from my, from my, I did, I left because it was hard for me to get home one way. And the traffic just keeps getting worse and worse and worse. And I also have a business the same way in, in Winter Park, and I leave at certain times. This is a small town that no longer has orange roads. You can see pictures of them on T-shirts, that's all you see anymore. What happens with the chemicals, because that's my main concern? As a cancer survivor, and I have a friend that actually won this roundup case, what happens to the retention ponds and the waste and the trash that people? And I'm not just speaking of pulling stuff out of my you-know-what. I'm someone that I only carry products that cleans the oceans. I carry products that only provide several services. If it doesn't provide where it helps the homeless or cleans the oceans, I don't carry it in my store. Because I'm a cancer survivor. And I'm based on a water treatment plant that was put close to our property, where we have horses. Okay, because nobody's talking about the chemicals.
Ma'am, you should see the chemicals we use in those cars.
I understand that, but I'm talking about natural, I'm talking about the people that are not affected by greed and that actually care, that's all I'm talking about, and I'll see you with that.